Any person may address the Board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of the Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff or a committee for a report and recommendation for possible action at a subsequent Board meeting. Please note, there's three minutes per person. Anybody from the public? Okay, hearing none. Any Board members? Hearing none. Regular agenda. Item one, Senate Bill 1199, Discussion and Possible Action Relative to Potential Amendments to Subject Bill. You want to start off, Mr. Ely, or do you want me, or whatever you want to do?
Well, I can give you a quick rundown of what we've got. These amendments that you've got in front of you, the SB 1199 amendments are labeled as amended on May 28, 2014, have come to us from Amador Water Agency. These would cause the Board to modify their position relative to the SB 1199. You could, however you chose, you could modify the... They are in the process of putting a letter together of the affected agencies in the area to ask the Calaveras Board of Supervisors to meet and consider these amendments. They would need to call a special amendment, a special meeting, to consider these amendments before next Monday, when they're first heard in committee. So that's another question that you should ask yourselves today, is if you want to authorize the Chairman to sign such a letter. And with that, any questions?
Thank you, Board members. Did I hear you also mention, Mr. Ely, that we could continue to oppose?
Yes, you can continue to oppose if you're not satisfied with these amendments, whichever, however you want to modify your position, or if you don't want to modify it at all.
Thank you, sir.
Pleasure to the Board.
Any comments from Board members?
Well, I'll just comment that there's, upon presentation, or testimony, whatever you want to call it, speaking before the East Bay Municipal Utility District Board last Tuesday, I don't know, somewhere around there, it was the, number one, it was the vote of their Board to not change their position, to continue to oppose the bill even after they had essentially gotten what they had requested in the way of amendments into the bill, but to continue to oppose the bill until the stakeholder process that they had referenced in their original opposition letter had had a chance to play out. We have been working in that stakeholder process with a host of affected agencies, two of the Calaveras County Water Agencies, the two Amador Water Purveyor Agencies, as well as Board of Supervisors, and some discussions with some members of the Calaveras Board of Supervisors. They are looking for some opportunity to be able to support Wild and Scenic on the McCombey if the concerns of the affected water purveyors in Amador and Calaveras Counties are effectively addressed. We have not had any effective addressing of those terms, and so that's what this process and subsequent meetings after that East Bay Mud meeting have been about, and that is trying to arrive at a set of amendments that protect the existing water rights and opportunities of both Amador and Calaveras Counties on the McCombey River to the satisfaction of those agencies, and try to present a cohesive voice before East Bay Mud stating so, if we can accomplish sort of a unanimity. So that's what we're here today to do, consider these, and the other agencies will be doing the same thing.
Can you address your previous meeting with Senator Hancock?
My previous meeting with Senator Hancock, and there was a host of individuals in the room representing a variety of factions of the Water Agency and other water purveyors. And I would say that meeting was largely brought about by virtue of the comments of members of the Senate Subcommittee on Natural Resources that implored Senator Hancock to, interestingly enough, continue with her stakeholder outreach process. She had represented that it had been ongoing. We all know the opposite of that to be true, but regardless of that, to continue with this, so, we were told that we were granted a half-hour window on such-and-such-a-date, on such-and-such-a-time to meet with the Senator, and it would be a very closely controlled timeline meeting, which it was. We went in and spoke on behalf of trying to allow a stakeholder process to play out, as she had represented before the Subcommittee that she'd been participating in, and other members of that committee had requested her to continue to do, and her comment regarding the stakeholder process, well, was essentially, sometimes the stakeholder process just results in a bunch of meetings and nothing's ever accomplished, so she really saw little need to continue with that. She had also been, I would say, and this is my opinion, I would say she had also been well-coached. Her responses were that, essentially word-for-word of Supervisor Chris Wright from Calaveras County, who had met with her the day before, essentially presenting the opposition's version of how this came about. So, that's a report on that earlier meeting. Very little accomplished.
At this time, does anybody want to come up and make a comment to the Board? Come on up, state your name for the record, sign in, please. You need a pin, let us know. We've got pins back here.
Good morning, good afternoon. Attorney Nielsen from Pine Grove. I looked over these amendments, and I understand why this is being done. Strategies need to change when you seem to see the flood coming at you. I would like to interject one other thought. We have looked at some of the things that could help out our other agencies and stuff, but this bill was not just to stop dams. It was so future generations of people can enjoy the river. I ask you, are there any parts of that river that are wild that would be better served as recreational? I know the Rodman's property is recreational, but on both sides of them, they have mining claims. Under wild designation, BLM will not let them goldmine. This is a gold mining county. Should we not be looking at some of this property that is accessible, that we can benefit from this recreational of this river, too? I'm saying we need to protect the Rodmans, too, and the gold heritage of this county, and I would like you to look at that as another amendment, to maybe look at the critical places where recreation designation would be better served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nielsen. Mr. Bennett, good afternoon.
Yeah, Mark Bennett, Pine Grove. I want to thank all of you, first of all, for your opposition to this. There's no need to repeat a lot of arguments that have been made, but one that the Foothill Conservancy has advanced is that dams are infeasible because of cost. Now, I don't doubt those figures, but I think to say that dams or other large water diversion projects, I think it's arrogant to say that, because I think there will be major improvements in technology, in cement, in construction over the next 50 years, and to take a frozen moment of cost this year and say that won't change is, as I said earlier, arrogant. Look back at the technological advances of the last 50 or 100 years. I would also like to say, as it's known, I am opposed to this. There was an article that I'm sure you're all aware of some time ago in the East Bay Express, actually, an editorial disguised as an article. I wrote an evaluation of that, I sent it into them, I corresponded with them earlier to make sure I met their guidelines in terms of length, et cetera, and they did not print it. They did, however, print a letter from Catherine Everett in the same week that my letter should have appeared, and I rewrote, hoping again to reach Bay Area audiences, I rewrote my original letter for the East Bay Express, sent it to several Bay Area papers, and it has not been printed. I'm not surprised. I was hoping, even among the liberals in the Bay Area, that there would be some residual populist sentiment, but apparently that has all degenerated into something else, and thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Anybody else?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
So I was at the Senator Hancock meeting with Supervisor Plasse, and he's got it exactly right. I'd like to touch on a couple of other things. Currently, in the May 28 version amendment, there was a carve-out for dams above the Wild and Scenic Stretch, but there was a prohibition about putting any new water in those dams. And we had suggested to Senator Hancock that the carve-out language that's in the current Wild and Scenic Public Records Act for Cache Creek was more appropriate. She opined that it was not. It was more like the Yuba River, which was the amendment that ended up on the May 28 in the bill. I would like to tell you, from my standpoint, the Yuba River flows almost two-and-a-half times in an annual flow than does the McCombey. The unconstrained flows on the McCombey look just like Cache Creek. There are just a few CFS in the summertime, and it's hard to imagine an unconstrained flow when there are somewhere between 12 and 20 dams above Pardee on the river. It's heavily regulated. And lastly, the Cache Creek cutout justified the additional water for Cache Creek, because there was no other source of water for that county besides Cache Creek, and I propose to you that that's exactly the situation that Amador County finds itself in. So with that, in your deliberations, you have the Water Agency's amendments, and they do allow for new water, and I would make a closing statement that this argument gets posed about either we have wild and scenic, or we have dams and we have restricted flows. And the collaborative process that's just been short-circuited would give pose to that either-or. I believe that we can have both. We can have decent flows, and we can have new water, and we are, because of the events of the time and the process, we don't have time to complete that process. We need to complete a deal which reserves water for us for the future. I think it's very important.
Mr. Toye, before you leave, I'd like to ask you a question as Chairman of the Water Agency, and I had a quick discussion with Mr. Mancebo earlier today, and have not heard back from him, but one of the provisions in this amendment, as proposed, talks about, "Nothing in this chapter shall prejudice, alter, delay, interfere with, or affect in any way the existing rights, comma, including but not limited to water rights, comma, of the Water Agency, JVID, and the Calaveras Entities." And it's been suggested that because both Amador County and Calaveras County are signatories to the 58 Agreement, that we would like to propose, including but not limited to water rights of the counties of Amador and Calaveras County, the Amador Water Agency, JVID, and on down the line, just with that little provision thrown in there. Do you?
You know, for myself, I see no problem with that, and if you've talked with Gene, you may have his position on that also. Gene, by the way, sends his apologies. He was in Sacramento working on this issue, and the meetings were running late, and he couldn't get back.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Ford?
Howdy, gentlemen. It's been a while since I was here. I forgot how scary it is. I discovered Amador County about 13 years ago, and what I noticed was it was an area that took care of itself. It was an area with a lot of responsible people, who took care of their own lives, took care of business, and survived and prospered the way they wanted to survive and prosper. And I decided that's where I wanted to live, you know, amongst people like that. And so over the past 10 years, hell, we've, well, it's not important, we probably put over $1 million into Amador County, you know, with jobs and buying materials and so on and so forth, and we love it here. There was a couple of elections that brought out some issues, and I live in District 5 in Philtown, of course, and so it's all about Supervisor Onato running for, and I found out there was a whole faction of people that wanted to change all this. They want to take certain assets, certain resources away from us, away from the people who lived here, for their purposes, their purposes, not necessarily what was good for the county, right, but for their purposes. As time rolled on, what I learned about was that there's an international movement, this started with Agenda 21 in Rio in the 90s, where there are many non-government organizations all over the world now that want to take assets away from us, and take resources away from us, and control those for their purposes. And there's something, just fundamentally, maybe it's because I grew up with Yankees and Maine and New Hampshire and all of that, but there's just something fundamentally wrong about that, and it really raises my hackles, and particularly when you have a community that does a fairly decent job, you know, policing itself with responsible people of good character and a lot of honesty, and I absolutely see that here, you know, being somewhat undermined by those who can't win an election in the community, so to resort to devices, you know, and technical tricks, okay, to get their way, okay? And that is so repulsive, you know, and to me, disgusting, and particularly given the status of whatever, you know, California political culture today, you know, is that one way to say it, where it's not about votes, you know, it's about what the judges have to say. Our vote doesn't mean nearly as much as it used to, okay? It's how the judges want us to live our lives, and that's pretty horrible. But when we can't influence our community because we don't have, you know, a good cause, and we have to go miles and miles away to find somebody that we identify with and identifies with our cause, to bring about the end result that we want, okay, you've got to fight back against that. You know, that's not America. That's not the exceptional place that we live, you know? That's a horrible way to live. And there's so many examples of, as you know, I know a little bit about owls these days, and it was in Dustville a couple of years ago, and it's a ghost town. I thought, what happened? I was here a few years ago, and it was a beautiful town, right? Well, it was about the spotted owl, right, and we had to protect the spotted owl, so guess what? We killed the town, we killed jobs, we drove people out of the area. We moved families away from their schools, okay, in the interest of this. The irony of that is, when we muck with something that fundamental, okay, we all lose. Those people lost, and the spotted owl is just about extinct and will be extinct, okay, very shortly, as a superior bird has taken over its habitat, right? And that's unfortunate. So I would just submit to you that whatever we can do, consider the fact that our federal government now owns, what, 55% of California? Isn't that enough government influence on us? I think it is, okay? And I would hope that we could continue to be honest, be truthful, character, dignity, be responsible, all those kinds of things, okay, and stand for what we believe in, and I urge you to continue to move these amendments ahead. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Your Rodman?
My name is Dennis Rodman, and I was hoping to come here tonight and tell you that we have an agreement with the authors of 1199 that would be acceptable to Roaring Camp, and I haven't given up on that process, that I was hoping to have heard back, especially with this meeting tonight, that we had agreement on what Catherine Everett and I had talked about over the weekend several times. Without having that assurance that we could be in a supportive amended position, we have to be in a position of being prepared to lose negotiations with her, and the only, our best way, our best route, other than that, is to, like Supervisor Plasse and Director Mancebo suggested, that we amend, you know, put our amendments up together, individual amendments, of course, but, and amend together, and I hadn't thought about it until just a minute ago, that obviously, the five of you have to accept the fact, would you carry an amendment for Roaring Camp as part of your package? So that's what I'm here requesting that you do, is carry this amendment. You may not need it, but it can't hurt, because it would be the same, I like to word it the same way that Catherine and I had talked about. And essentially, what it says is that from 400 feet downstream of a small re-regulating dam at the outlet of the West Point Powerhouse to the southern boundary of Section 12, Township 6 North, Range 12 East, that is just upstream from Roaring Camp. It leaves like three of our mining claims out, but I'm not so concerned about that. And the next point, it skips over Roaring Camp, which would exclude us. And then the next point on that would be from 1,400 feet upstream of the Middle Fork McCombey River Confluence to the Middle Fork of the, yeah, the Middle Fork McCombey River Confluence to the Middle Fork of the McCombey River Confluence would be either scenic or So that would be 1,400 feet up from the confluence of the river, it's short of Roaring Camp some, so that means that that block would exclude us from the Wild and Scenic River Designation. And then the other point that we talked about would be, because this is the way the bill was worded, they're calling the main stem of the river from the confluence of the Middle Fork. That's all the forks of the river together. And it says, "From the Middle Fork of McCombey River Confluence to the northern boundary of Section 23, Township 6 North, Range 12 East, would be recreational or scenic, either one." We don't worry about the recreational scenic designation, it's the wild designation, which could trigger problems for us in the future, potentially. And this point of the northern boundary of Section 23 is just downstream from our mining access road that we access that whole lower part of our mining claims at, so what I said to Catherine in an email is that with these three changes and the exclusion of Roaring Camp left by the gap, Roaring Camp is in a supportive amended position, but of course, we aren't there yet. And so because of that, I would like to have the Board carry this amendment in that same form, because that is essentially, I feel that it, as a business, Roaring Camp isn't affected negatively by the Wild and Scenic if we can have those three sections of the river.
Is not affected negatively?
What's that?
Would probably not be as affected as negatively. You said would be affected negatively.
Well, with the state, with the state level, they only go to the, you know, to the edge of the permanent vegetation, so it's the high-water line, essentially, of the river is the only thing that they control, and they don't control any mining activities on the BLM or on private property at all on that. And I run that by Jim Iker, our field man from BLM, and he said that we aren't, there will be no problem with it, and I have him, and I said, you send me an email, and he did, you know? Said that they won't, there may be something else that gets it, but it won't be the Wild and Scenic River on a state designation. And even on the national river designation, the wild one says, the language is very hard to understand, especially if you're not an attorney, but you can hire yourself a whole roomful of attorneys, and almost every one of them gives you a little different bent on it, so, but essentially, is what it does, is the wild doesn't allow you to file on a claim longer. If it's an already-existing claim, the word is perfected, as long as it's up-to-date and you've paid your early dues and all that stuff, that they won't take it away from you. So anyway, and that's why I wanted to stay away from the wild, though, because I don't trust that, because it, sure, even the national level, which I'm afraid it's, you know, may be a wild, but we've been there 50 years, and we don't intend to go anywhere, so I'd like to look into the future as far as I can, and, but anyway, like on the state level, if we can get Roaring Camp exempted, and that's essentially what this does, and gives all of our mining claims a lower, lower down the ladder from wild, that's what I would propose to the Board, that they would approve and carry it with you.
Excuse me, so you said, basically, on the federal wild and scenic, the claims, as long as they're perfected and you pay your filing fee and you do your assessment work?
Up-to-date, like if you were to miss it, you just lost your mining claim.
Yeah, okay.
But as long, but that's a matter of, you've got to be prudent enough to enter the game.
Which I think, in all fairness, has always been that way.
Exactly, right, yeah. Because somebody else could refile on your claim the next day.
But with that designation on it, nobody else could file on it now, if it's wild and scenic?
Well, not on the state level, it wouldn't.
Right, but the federal?
But the federal level, if we ever get to that point, yeah, you could...
You'd lose your claim, and nobody could...
Someone else in the county wanted to go mine on that river, if it was designated wild, they'd be out of luck.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Rodman, have you talked to people, other landowners, about this? About this, you know, this so-called, well, if it's wild, we will not be able to file, but if it's scenic or recreational?
Well, I haven't because of the fact that this is a state bill.
So you yourself, or your family, does not have any personal response from other landowners that have had this issue before than before?
Not about mining claims, no. No, I bet a lot of people call, and we, you know, we're one of a group of landowners that are concerned, that the state bill is a lot different than the federal bill, but, I mean, like the federal bill happens, I mean, as long as we have the lawmakers we have in now on a federal level, it's not much of a chance of it happening, but that can happen. can happen, that can change every two years, you know? But that's what bothers me, is that we're protected now, we hope, by the lawmakers, but that changes, then we're in a whole different world, and I'll be wishing, I'll be cursing myself for the day I come up here and said this.
Well, and Mr. Rodman, the, you say that if it were to go to the federal level, which I continue to believe is a very distinct possibility.
As well as myself.
The request of a governor and approval of the secretary, there's been arguments stated against that, but we all know the feds pretty much can do as they darn well please, whether it be our trails in the forest that are supposed to be a forest for everyone or waters on the river. But the federal legislation influences about a quarter-mile swath on either side of the river from both a wild and/or scenic and/or recreational impact. So could you foresee any type of, I'm not talking development from the standpoint of structures, but uses of your mining claim for its intended purposes that may be construed to be a negative impact to the scenic values controlled by that quarter-mile swath of the federal designation? You've made the point that your claim couldn't be taken away as long as you continue to keep it perfected, but could it be influenced as to what you can really do with that claim by virtue of that quarter-mile protection zone in the federal designation?
You know, probably, in all honesty, John, the issue that they could hurt us on would be water quality, you know? But that's the state's water quality control board. I don't think the federal government, you know, we don't own the land anyway, a quarter of a mile. And that's why it was so important to me that we exclude Roaring Camp from the Wild and Scenic, because otherwise, we'd have a quarter of a mile on either side of the river swath right through the middle of Roaring Camp that we would be. We'd like to build another cabin? No. On a national level, right?
And that's the concern of the other property owners on the river.
Oh, absolutely. And if one burnt down, maybe you couldn't even rebuild it. I don't know. The intent of the act in a wild river scene on a national level is to make it just that, you know? No.
Right. Similar to the wilderness language, you know, untrammelled by man.
Scenic part of the national level river controls that quarter of a mile and it's like a view corridor, they don't want to see any new buildings. So if you owned land, and it was scenic on the national level, you may have a hard time getting a building from it if they can see you from the river.
You know, I have a question for you, Mr. Rodman. You say you've been talking to Federal Conservancy, specifically probably Catherine Evin, I imagine?
That's correct. Yeah, because they're a sponsor, one of the co-sponsors of the.
So what, I hear them talk about supporting local economy and local businesses and trying to do good things for Amador County, that's their mantra, other than, besides saving the river, I'm not sure from whom. What have they been proposing to you to safeguard your business recently? What's their most recent proposal?
Um.
That's kind of a hard question off the top of your head, but basically.
Yeah, we haven't really discussed, I mean, we discussed the fact of rafters, you know, coming and potentially, we could have a, I don't know how you'd make any money doing it, but I'm sure they'd love to come to Roaring Camp, put their raft in there, and they can go all the way down to Middle Bar from.
Like a rafting takeout concession?
Where, if you go Highway 26, there's, you know, from the West Point Powerhouse down, I can show you a video that Catherine forwarded to me, that there may be a handful of guys in the whole United States that could ride a raft down there, but they only do it once. We had three of them come through there last weekend. They made it through, but they had to hike way up and around, and they didn't get there till about four o'clock in the afternoon, and they wanted to know how far it was to Elektra, because that's where they had to go, you know? And it's a long way from Roaring Camp to Elektra.
And I saw a similar situation.
So it's like, unless we hauled them in there, you know, like I told, like I told John, I said, I guess we could put a little screen across the river and tell them they had to stop in and buy a hamburger in order to pass through or something. But other than that, I don't know, you know, I don't know how we'd make any money.
Well, because it's virtually impassable above you, right? That stretch of the river is, I mean, there's a few.
Five hundred, you know, like it's 500 feet of drop per mile, and there's about three falls in there that are, in a row, that are 30 footer, steeper. And they got rocks the size of two or three cars in them, in it. So it's not a place you'd want to fall out of your raft, you know?
And the rafters you saw this.
Upside down and have to pop itself loose, you know, you may not survive it.
And the rafters you saw this last weekend actually had to take their kayaks and.
Oh, yeah.
Hike up over the hills to get around that.
Orage area.
And on this video, it showed them pulling the raft through the rocks.
I watched it.
Stacked one on top of the other, you watched that, yeah. It was quite interesting, yeah.
Dennis, I was wondering, going back a little bit, digressing back, how would this affect your ability to get water out of the river for your plaster mining operation, if any of this, you don't know?
Not at all.
Not at all, so?
Yeah. We have a riparian right that goes.
Okay.
Back forever, you know? Really hasn't been interrupted hardly at all in there. So as long as we're just using, you know, we couldn't pump it out and sell it, but as long as we're using it there on site, you know, we have, and what we, you know, we irrigate part of our meadow there.
Probably if you let your claim lapse, then whoever asks filed on it wouldn't get the riparian right.
Yeah, yeah. We don't like, we don't take water out of the river to do anything with it, other than like run a, we used to run the suction dredges, and we have some whiz bangs and some things that we use. It's gotten harder to mine, because you have to pond the water, you know, the water can't run from the sluice box. It can run from the sluice box if it's vacuumed out of the river, but if it's taken off the bank, it can't be, you can't pipe, pump water out of the river to your sluice box and let that trail of silt go back into the water any longer. So it's a lot different story.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodman.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I think that it's all well that we're worried about our water. To have our water taken and stopped because rafting needs to proceed is kind of scary because of the health and welfare of the people who live up country. Because we only have the junior water rights, those are in peril. The other situation that I think that I would like you to really consider is the fact under the Wild and Scenic designation puts you as the Board of Supervisors under the power of an unelected, political-appointed bureaucrat, the Secretary of Department of Resources, which means that the things that we do not know what is going to happen, whether we have drought continue, whether what is going to happen with climate change, we do not know. And the fact that we may have one year's worth of water stored at this point, that's okay. But there's other land use issues that come into play that's under your purview, that we would like you to remain our elected body, not put us under an administrative bureaucrat to make decisions along our own river. The sections in the Wild and Scenic law that makes me very concerned are 5093.60. "The Resource Agency shall be responsible for coordinating the activities of state agencies whose activities affect the river in the system with those of other state, local, and federal agencies with jurisdiction over matters which may affect the river." So while Dennis may think he's going to be okay on a mining claim, the EPA has just issued new rules coming down, which want to take over many state waters, as well as all waters on private property. It's a very serious situation that unless you really know and can look back at what has happened so far in the Klamath River Basin, their riparian water rights were curtailed, and their water was taken away from them on the branches and farmers along the river. It is so bad now that Shasta Lake is really not any value anymore economically. There's hardly any water in it. We just had the state come in and un-moo fishes from Sacramento Nimbus area, because they are also under Wild and Scenic, and the water levels are so low because of the drought, the fishes will die. So if you follow it through, if we let all the free water flow, and there is no more water or snow packed to deliver water, and we are continuing in a drought, the fishes are all going to die anyway. And there won't be any water for rafting. There is nothing stopping the rafting now. But you're putting us under another bureaucratic level of control and taking your own ability to control our Amador County and sticking it under, not only that, but the Fish and Game, Bureau of Land Management, Forest Service, all these Clean Water Acts, and the things that are coming down are coming down this next two years, because that administration is hopefully on their way out. So they're pushing really hard to take more and more control over private property. And if you read the law yourself, I don't think any of you would want to put your land under this designation. And even if you get some of the amendments in, I don't think they're going to, they're happy because you're under Wild and Scenic, because it gives them more power over all of it. So I really do not feel that we need to come under by an NGO and people who are getting paid to lobby to have this Wild and Scenic put in. I don't think it's fair to the rest of your constituents and taxpayers here in Amador County. They want a very, very restricted thing to help them have a rafting when we may not even have water for drinking or for agriculture use. You know, where is our thinking gone? It's just beyond me. So I urge you to please get out the section of 509360 in an amendment, and 5096, 509361, to keep your basic rights as elected representatives of Amador County. Thank you.
Even Frederick, General Manager, Jacks Valley Irrigation District.
Good evening.
Evening.
Good evening.
This is more of a, just a little side note, but JVID will be holding a special meeting tomorrow night on the AWA proposed amendments. I can't give you any direction, but of which way they're going to go, but JVID has formed a committee specific to SB 1199. I think we all in the committee feel that this may be our last resort, this set of amendments, to be able to get what we need out of the river. If you have any questions specific to JVID in our interest, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you. Board members?
Steve, I've got a question for you. Do you feel that these set of amendments, because the, and let me preface it by saying because the State Wild and Scenic Act specifically mentions the secretary's determination of whether there's a need for domestic water to the residents of the county, do you feel that these set of amendments address that adequately that would allow JVID to continue with its agricultural-related diversions?
Specific to our existing water right of our 3850, read into the bill, you could read it one of both ways, but it shouldn't affect our 3850 that we currently receive. I think the concern is, is that any future water that may come from the McCombey River, now, I'm not sure where a project would be on the McCombey River. With this amendment, we're pretty much excluding that 37 miles of a potential project. Any project would have to be outside that.
But you don't feel the distinction between domestic water versus ag water is of concern because your current water right diversion allows for you to use it in the historical uses that JVID currently has?
That was a concern that we would like addressed. We feel that it should be taken care of in this amendment.
Good evening.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm from Fiddle Town, and I live on the south fork of the Casumis River.
Your name for the record, please?
My name is Harry Cowan, C-O-W-A-N. Been about 25 years out there. Half the time, the river runs dry around July or August. This stretch of the McCombey is the only natural river environment where the population is. And if I'm not mistaken, there's a lot of dams on this river already. So I support this bill, and I hope the majority of you have the wisdom in your deliberations to see to it, to enable this to be a part of our current rules and regulations for water management. I'm sure that can be worked out with additional amendments, like you say. I'm not a paid lobbyist. No one hired me to come here, and I wouldn't take money to do it. It's more valuable than that to me. I hope you see it the same way. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mr. Wardle.
Mr. Chairman and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm at the far end of the Amador Water System, and I used a chemical toilet and trucked water until I could put in 37,000 feet or seven miles of water, water pipe. We have, we're in the Ion Formation, which is a lot of clay. It's water-laden, but it's not water-bearing. And we drilled 10 wells on a section of land as deep as 700 feet, and the best we got was three-quarter gallon a minute. So I, believe me, I know how precious water is. Anyway, it, I want to thank you very much for supporting the opposition to this bill and getting what amendments you can to make Amador County have a little bit of control of our water in our county. The environmental movement does not have our county's long-term best interest and use for the river or the water. I think that these folks have a lot of hidden agendas. I think that there's going to be a lot of controls and other things that if this bill is fully implemented, we're going to lose total control of the river. And it'll be a great place to go rafting and have little, little consequences for. great place to go rafting and have little, little consequences for future water needs in a responsible way for dams, powerhouses, whatever, that are appropriately and prudently used. That doesn't mean that we're going to go nuts and build a dam or anything else if this is not, is this bill's defeated. But I think that we are doing a big disservice to ourselves and the citizens of the county of locking that river up where we have any future needs for our use of water and dams diversions or whatever are locked out. You look at the, I've said it before, I fly over the Auburn Dam as a firefighting pilot for years and I look at this and, yeah, that'd be kind of nice to have right now about 2 million acre of feet of water in that dam or flood control in the winter where Sacramento's building all types of levees. And it's just a shame to see what the environmental movement has done in the obstruction of construction of that facility that would be a win-win situation. But it's very sad. I'll close with this. I think that the Foothill Conservancy has had a lot of contributions, well over $10,000 in many of the contributions, individual contributions. And it begs the question of where is that money going and which legislators are getting donations to support this legislation? It, you know, money is, I think it was Jess Andrew said, that money is the mother's milk of politics and I'm watching, looking and asking where that money is flowing to. So thank you for the opportunity to comment. I appreciate it. And all of the residents in the western part of the county in Eagles Nest down there oppose this legislation. Thank you.
Good evening, Cecily. Good evening, gentlemen. Cecily Smith, I'm here on behalf of Foothill Conservancy and I want to respond to the comment that was just made suggesting that we have made contributions to legislators. We have never, we are not allowed by law to do that and we have never done that. I find it very disturbing and upsetting that someone would insinuate that and I'm very upset. So I'm getting a little emotional, but I want to assure you that we have never made any political contributions or supported any candidate. We are not allowed to do so by law. Thank you.
Here's the deal. You all knew my father very well. My father, the only reason Roaring Camp is there is because my father took a stand. When he was told no, he decided, hey, I'm going to do this, I'm going to do that. He did what needed to be done. He would have taken a stand on this Wild and Scenic. There's no question in my mind what he would have told you. You know what he would have said. You've all talked to him. He would have told you, absolutely not, I oppose it. However, I've heard from talking with my brother and many other people, I'm afraid it's going to go through whether we oppose it or not. So the only reason, only way I can protect my business, not for my brother and I or my husband, but for my kids and my grandkids and everyone else, is to try to make some amendments. I want those people behind me who I can feel are upset at my family for maybe even making an amendment or trying to amend something. I want them to understand it's not because we don't necessarily want to. We have to do what's right, what's going to happen. So that's why we're asking for your help in doing whatever we can to make it so that we can all live with this, whether it's what we want or don't want, it's maybe what's necessary. So I just want, like I say, all of you who knew my father and know my family to understand that sometimes you have to do things for what, because you have no choice. Okay? Thank you.
Respect that, Kim. Thank you.
No, and I respect your dad. He was a, he was a good man.
And it does...
Also a heck of a good storyteller.
It does break my heart because I know what my father would be saying to you if he was standing here, but times have changed. Things are different. You can't just go to Washington DC and change things nowadays, which is the reason we have water and what we have down at Roaring Camp is because my father did that. We don't have the ability to do that anymore. Government has become bigger, more controlling, as you well know. So because of that, we have, we have to try to do what we can to preserve what we have.
So I would agree with you. Don't always expect justice if you go to Sacramento or Washington DC. Quite often you may not get it.
Right.
And I think a perfect case in point is Senator Leland Yee, who was indicted for arms trafficking and corruption and he got 10% of the vote in California and somehow he got almost 9% in Amador County.
Yeah, that's pretty crazy, isn't it? Thank you.
Touche.
Rich Farrington.
Good evening. Good, good evening. Close. Rich Farrington, Director, District 3, Amador Water Agency. SB 1199, as written, takes away our water rights and water. It transfers health, our wealth, to the other parts of the state. I've been asked how it takes away water. Well, if our water shrinks because of what extended drought or climate change that the state and federal governments keep warning us about and we can't replace that missing water using our water rights, then 1199 takes away our water. There are 21 water-related entities, last count, that have taken an opposed position. But we've been working with representatives of the water agencies and we think we have a compromise on amendments that would protect our water and water rights. SB 1199 would prevent adding water storage capacity to any of the seven existing high-country reservoirs because of the restriction that taking water, quote, "shall avoid an adverse effect on the free-flowing condition of the river." And these would be downstream rivers. The reservoirs upstream. And if it weren't for those reservoirs, if they didn't exist today, that river would be drying up, killing fish, frogs, what have you. Water quality would be going bad. So those reservoirs help maintain our water quality and the ecology of the river. We have county of origin water rights and SB 1199 has written currently severely jeopardizes the agency's ability to use the county of origin water rights that have been reserved by the state for Amador County in 1927 because of this free-flowing restriction. This free-flowing restriction in a section of the existing Wild and Scenic River Law, Public Resource Code 5093.56, state and federal grants and low-interest loans would be denied for any new project that, quote, "could have an adverse effect on the free-flowing condition of the river." This effectively prevents funding for planning and raising an existing dam upstream of the designated sections and using water to fill it. So we could, you could build a dam, but you couldn't put water in it. It could cost us a million dollars to do sufficient studies to try and determine whether or not there could be an adverse effect on the free flow. It really, it makes it financially infeasible to do anything. What does "could" mean? Well, we probably wind up in court trying to determine that if we could afford it. I could say nobody should go home in a car today because you could get in an accident. And we could wind up in court asking a judge to decide what could happen. Water curtailment, because of the current record drought that we're in, the state has just ordered Amador Water Agency to stop taking water out of the river for the up-country customers, our so-called COP system, because of our junior water right. It's a 1927 right and they consider anything later than 1914 a junior right. And the state board is indicating that they're probably going to be curtailing senior water rights in the near future, possibly within a month. So now for our up-country customers, we have to rely on what's in Lower Bear River Reservoir because under this curtailment, any water flowing in, and probably isn't very much now because there isn't much, much snow up there, but any water coming in has to be let out. It can't be, can't raise the level. We really need more of a backup supply of water up there now in our existing reservoirs. And there've been a lot of arguments about, and the high cost of building new dams, but we're not talking about building new dams. We're talking about being able to raise existing reservoirs and there are seven of them. One of the things that we'd really like to see is this more wise planning process that...